I guess I should not have my
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call the May 28, 2025 Borough Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please read your public meeting statement?
Addict notice that this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231 of the law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual release schedule to the official newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the Borough Clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambra.
Here.
Councilman Connelly.
Here.
Councilman Nenka.
Here.
Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Posnansky.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Bignolo.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Here.
Borough Engineer Lupuskanka.
Here.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr. Borough Clerk Gretchen McCarthy. And former Borough Clerk Monica Riligo.
Present.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence which will be followed by the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty in the first place.
So I'm going to read the oath of office for the new Borough Clerk. I, Gretchen Carter. Do you solemnly swear that I will support Constitution I will swear that I support Constitution, sorry. Of the United States and the Constitution of the same state of New Jersey that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the governments established in the United States and in the state of New York under the authority of the people and that I will faithfully and partially the duties of Borough Clerk to the best of my ability so help God. Okay, we have swearing of three police officers.
I state your name.
I, Amy Nidewa.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey
and the Constitution and the state of New Jersey
that I bear true faith and allegiance
that I bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the government established
and to the government established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
and this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
and that I will faithfully
and I will faithfully
and partially and justly perform all the duties of a police officer
all the duties of a police officer
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
I state your name.
I, Gordon Wiggins.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of a police officer to the best of my ability so help me God. I, State your name.
I, John Gagen.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I support the Constitution
that I support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of New Jersey that I bear true faith and allegiance
that I bear true faith and allegiance
to the same and to the government established
and to the government established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
and in this state
under the authority of the people
and the people
and that I will faithfully
and I will faithfully
and partially and justly perform
and justly perform
all the duties of a police officer
all the duties of a police officer
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
Back to normal, I tell you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for all your
Congratulations. Congratulations.
It's just for to be streamed or is it going to be aired somewhere?
This is streaming right now, Todd. Yeah, it'll be on YouTube.
I see YouTube Studios does it.
Come on, you can set the account.
That was all our guests.
I showered this week.
Next, we have a presentation from the Milltown Historic Preservation Committee.
Good evening. I am Randy Ruth, Chair of the Milltown Historic Preservation Committee, and I am here tonight to present to the council the committee's biannual obligation outlined by ordinance. Also here is Milltown Historic Preservation Committee and Milltown Historical Society member Barbara Santoro, who will be presenting a portion of this presentation shortly. Diving right in, recent events include participation in Milltown Day back in 2024 and two roundtables in partnership with Middlesex County and Preservation New Jersey, which began as a collaboration that incorporated county municipalities to host various preservation-themed events. One was the Milltown Historic Preservation Roundtable theme Historic Preservation Master Planning and was on November 30, 2024. There was another roundtable entitled Preventing Demolition and Adaptive Reuse that was held on December 10, 2024. Both events were well-attended, with one in December having about, I think it was a little over 20 people. Most recently, we were in attendance at East Jersey Old Town at History Day, which was May 17. This event was also well-attended and offered us to connect to various people in the greater Milltown community. While the existing committee has made significant contributions, it's important to note that it lacks the authority and power of a Historic Preservation Commission. Such a commission, which requires professional involvement, is empowered by municipal land use laws. It sets forth the rules of historic preservation and ensures equitable practices. The absence of such a commission in Milltown due to the municipality not pursuing the necessary legislation has hindered our efforts in securing grants and funding. The municipal land use law enables municipalities to establish a commission. However, Milltown has not yet taken advantage of this provision. The first step towards establishing a commission involves incorporating an historic preservation element into the master plan. These planning elements are crucial and have significant impact regardless of of the uncertainty of the outcomes. The recent success of the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan, which involved extensive review by Planning and Zoning Board and considerable community outreach, serves as an exemplary model. It demonstrates the effectiveness of well-fought out planning and the positive outcomes that can result. A historic preservation element in the master plan plays a similar plays a similar role as the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan. It establishes guidelines set the standards to help in planning for the future. Contrary to misconception, it's not about dictating minor aesthetic choices like house colors. The focus is on promoting property value growth, protecting properties, and preserving cultural heritage through architectural details. It's about celebrating Milltown's past, shaping a future that respects our history and enhances, while enhancing the town's appeal to both businesses and residents. There are so-called weak and strong commissions, and they are both useful for residents. At this time, the request is to develop a weak commission so as to provide some better level of preparedness while at the same time not create any excessive barriers to development. Next slide, please. There are other strategies that have been proposed in lieu of a preservation commission, such as placement of demolition restrictions. Demolition restrictions, these do not work they don't work entirely on their own, and by decreasing derelict buildings or preventing a building from being an overgrown lot, restricting demolition encourages rehabilitation and adaptive reuse by boosting surrounding home values. New Jersey law allows municipalities to impose demolition delays up to a year for things that are designated as historic or scenic structures. This pause opens up opportunities to secure funding, plan for reuse, or negotiate sales by avoiding hasty demolition. Another option is New Jersey's Demolition Bond Loan Program, which offers municipalities access to low-interest loans for unsafe building removal, conditional on planning and reuse strategies. By salvaging the materials like bricks or timber that make up the structure, municipalities can offset demolition expenses. Milltown can also set demolition permit fees to fully cover administrative costs, plan review, inspections, documentation, which I'm sure it does to a certain degree now, but maybe could be reviewed. However, we already have a version of this embedded in the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan, but it really doesn't do enough. Next slide, please. The current state of affairs is that the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan encourages adaptive reuse of historic structures, but only in the Firehouse District, which mandates adaptive reuse of the Firehouse and Milltown Historical Society buildings where demolition is only allowed with strong justification. While that saves money by avoiding full reconstruction, reducing landfill costs, and preserves architectural identity, it also lowers capital expenses and offers reduction in infrastructure string from new construction. Keep in mind that South Main Street includes vacant buildings and old infrastructure with an average construction date of 1904. Likely this number is older, but the housing data may not be 100% accurate. We should be implementing more rehabilitation strategies that prioritize reinvestment over raising properties. Since this preserves tax revenues from improved property values and avoids tax loss from vacant lots, the buildings that were demolished across the street from the Firehouse could have continued to provide tax revenue had they not been demolished and sat as an empty lot idle for over three-plus years. There are also aging water and sewer lines that would need costly upgrades if demolition led to large-scale redevelopment that can't support it. By promoting controlled rehabilitation through preservation, this reduces stress on these fragile systems. This can help defer utility capital upgrades by moderating demand growth in key areas of town. Next slide, please. So we do have restrictions. These already exist, like I said, and it says, "If demolition of the Firehouse or either of the Stark homes within the district is approved by Borough Council, the developer shall arrange to have the buildings and the sites documented with photographs, a scaled site plan, scaled floor plans, and a scaled exterior elevations." At its sole cost of the developer. And the documentation provided to the borough, the developers shall also permit the borough or its designees to salvage any distinctive feature, memorabilia, or other items from from the building elements that may have historical value to the borough. This is better than nothing, but it doesn't address other properties in South Main Street or elsewhere that could be subject to development. We as a borough should be more proactive with a weak commission. Next slide, please. So why? This is money. Because why this is, time is money, and we need to be proactive. There are things that we don't fully know or appreciate. This includes properties nearby in the South Main Street, to the Firehouse District. Now I'd like to pass to Barbara Santoro for something a little different than a typical ask-for her.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, can I have the next slide, please?
This map is an 1876 map of Milltown, obviously not to scale. And this was found also in the very first History of Milltown book, that's on the inside cover. And at one of our Historical Society meetings, we were looking at the names of the folks that were in town. And one thing that really caught our eye was, on the bottom right, you see Schwendeman, spelled incorrectly, and then De Hart, and then a piece of property, a building that is set back from the street, and it says H. Brown, C.O.L. Well, we didn't think that was Henry Brown, Colonel Henry Brown. So we wondered if that meant colored. And it was next to a house that says Mrs. Veldt, and that's the proper German spelling of that, which you will not find in most other censuses. And I thought, okay, because I'm a genealogy nut, to the point that I hired a genealogist to do some work for my family background, I know it takes months and months and lots of digging to find all of the answers. So I may not have all of the answers, but we have a lot of information that points to a conclusion that that may have been the home of Henry Brown, an African-American. So can I have the next slide, please? In the 1860 census, it shows Henry Brown with his daughter Sarah, who's two years old. And then you might be thinking, well, 1860 census, was he a freed man? Where did he come from? That I have not been able to find out, other than the fact that New Jersey passed, excuse me, the Gradual Abolition of Slavery Act on February 15, 1804, which meant that Henry Brown in 1860 was a free man. And he was living in the Milltown section of East Brunswick. And we know it is the Milltown section of East Brunswick because at the bottom of the page, that's what it says. It's the Village of Milltown in East Brunswick. So any man or woman that was born in 1804 after the Fourth of July, once they reached the age of 21, a woman, would be free, and age 25 for a man. New Jersey was the very last northern state to begin the process of ending slavery. So I find this to be very, very interesting, that in the Village of Milltown, we had this family living here. Next slide, please. So this is the 1870 census, and you can see that all of Henry Brown's family is there. I marked a little blue dot next to his family. And that there are other familiar names on this page as well. And the interesting thing I have found about genealogy and census reporting is that whoever is doing the census may not understand what the person is saying, and they spell the names incorrectly. So the Veldt family coming from Germany may have said Veldt or Weldt or whatever, and this was then written down as Weldt, W-E-L-D-E. But remember, on that map, that was the neighbor to Henry Brown. So to me, this shows that Henry Brown did raise his family in Milltown, the part of East Brunswick. And there are other names that are familiar on this. If I had the whole page, there's the Schlosser family and some other families that have names very familiar to Milltown. Next slide, please. In the 1880 census, you still see the Veldt family. And down near the bottom is Philip Schlosser, who is listed as a grocery and saloon keeper. And Henry Brown is still here with his younger children and his wife. So if we can have the next slide, please. Then we had this in the Milltown Museum, which is a picture of Philip Schlosser's store at about 1890. And it's in the caption saying that it's Philip Senior to the left, Philip Junior to the right, and Rooster or Brewster Brown. Now, this would not be Henry Brown Senior because he would have been 70 in 1890. So it could have been one of his five sons. So that family was still in the area in 1890. Next slide, please. Randy, if you could please comment on this section, on this map, this is
So this is a map of the Firehouse District on the left, which includes the Milltown Historical Society buildings. And then across the street would be the Schwendeman property. And in the lower right-hand corner would be the section which is called, which is named Heritage of Milltown, which the developers
So the idea is that if we have the absolute proof that the Schwendeman property, that's property number 86, is where Henry Brown raised his family, we feel that that's a very important historical factor in saying that we need to have some kind of a commission so we can designate historic properties or even create historic districts. When we say creating a historic district, we're not trying to look at the whole town. We're not trying to look at blocks and blocks, but to start small so that, I mean, even the Schwendeman family has a lot of history behind it and their influence within the town. And their building was built in 1859. So again, anecdotally, if that house was built in 1859 and the next house in chronological order would be built in 1893, 1903 and 1908, it's very likely that this was Henry Brown's residence in 1860. And that if we could designate that as a historic building, historic property, a small historic district could be created by including not only the Schwendeman property, but lots, I'm sorry, properties 83, 84, and 85, which is the Milltown Museum, the Milltown Museum Annex, and the South Main Street Firehouse. So some points about having historic districts, if you've driven into different towns, welcome to historic Cranbury, welcome to historic Jamesburg. All of these different towns really play up the fact that they have something historic about them. So if you had a designated district, perhaps that can also be marketed to bring more business and more interest to South Main Street as well as the entire town. And it not only would bring more of an interest to the history of the town, what's behind these different buildings? We have a lot of old buildings, but old doesn't make it historic. So in order for us to continue this type of research, we would certainly involve the town, Historic Society, and say, if we can just have these little pockets within town, it doesn't have to be the whole town being historic, that it really will leverage interest in Milltown itself and the museum if we have this as a mini historic district. And again, the commission can use this historic district as an example to let the residents know that there's not going to be government overreach. If we designate small pockets as historic districts and we show that we're not going in there, as Randy said, to tell you what color to paint your house, what kind of porch to put up, and all of these things, then I think that that would really assuage a lot of fears that people have in having a commission. So Randy, do you have any closing remarks?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
So I just wanted to add that leave it. So the Schwendeman property is adjacent to the heritage properties that are slated for, I mean, they've been considered in the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan for redevelopment.
I mean, they've been considered in the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan for redevelopment, and I think it's reasonable to, to assume that the property owner could be interested. And as it stands right now, there's no protections or demolition protections like we have with the Firehouse and Historical Society Buildings. So it's kind of like we've just focused on one spot and said, you know what, we're going to protect these, but yet we haven't been proactive enough to plan for the things that we don't see coming down the road, you know? And when the time comes, things are lost, things have historic value, to the point where there's not even a consideration, not a pause, not a two-week delay for even the count, for these things to come to council. They are handled just by right administratively, and that's when people say, well, how come nobody stopped it? And everybody says, well, we didn't have the authority to. And that's something that a commission can really help, help do, is at least give the council more power to have a better say when these things come along, that none of us are coming down the road. So with that, I have nothing else, but if you have any questions, I'm sure me or Barbara could answer. Thank you.
Not a, not a question, but I'd like to talk about the, the two older homes that you have, the one that you started deciding as the museum in. I, I, I feel that since we own these homes, that, that we should, we should do some kind of maintenance or upgrading because, because we own them. And I, I know the one, the house behind, to me, it looks terrible, and I, I think we should, we should do something about that. Unfortunately, financial-wise, we, we don't have a lot of money to do that. I know there's, there's grants, and there's a grant I'm going to talk about in my DPW report to possibly help historic preservation in the town, because I, I appreciate your cause and your dedication, and I think that, that we should do something to help you get somewhere with that. That's, that's what I have to say.
I appreciate it, Gary, and I appreciate you being the liaison. The only thing I would add, add to mention to that is, by having a commission, you, you basically set the rules. And once, a lot of people don't want to give boroughs or individuals money if they can't trust that that money is going to be spent properly. So that's what a commission really does, is that it sets those rules and that groundwork so that way the borough is then eligible for a lot more grants to come in, and so therefore there's, there's less public dollars being spent.
Well, I was going to say one other thing. I, I talked to a friend of mine who's, who's political, and because of the situation, and I know that you've been talking about the house needing work and, and paint, and what I told him that I was going to do tonight was to, I wanted to donate the money for the renovation, for paint and supplies, and he said, don't do it, you're going to get yourself in trouble. And I also said I would help paint if you had some kind of a, 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 so where it would be rightfully, if, if the money does come in, I'd be happy to help if you have, if you want to paint, and I'd be happy to do it anyway.
Yeah, I think that's more of a decision based off of a liability that the borough attorney would address.
But, but I'm, I'm offering.
Well, check with your attorney.
Randy, I have a question. Thank you both for the presentation. I really appreciate it. So as, as it exists, it's called the Milltown Historical Society.
So there are two groups. There's a historic, Historical Society that's been around since the 60s. They're focused mostly on the, the stories, right? You know, the, the artifacts that tell those stories, whereas the Historic Preservation Committee, which was always intended to eventually become a commission in some form, is really the, the, the beginnings of that, that brokerage between public and private partnership, right? Because it would funk, a commission would function like a, like a planning board, you know? It would be a part of the municipal government.
So, so can you explain to me a little bit more about that process? Like, has there been an application to be a commission?
Well, so it doesn't, it's not really an application, it's more of that there's no, there's no restrictions for the, the Borough Council, just like any other ordinance, to, to pass it, right? And that process is outlined by the Municipal Land Use Law, just like if you wanted to combine a planning board and zoning board, Milltown doesn't need to figure out how to do that. They just look to the, the Land Use Law, and the instructions are effectively there. And those same types of instructions exist for Historic Preservation Commission, which sets in motion a lot of little things that create a, a very comprehensive package, like the Historic Preservation Element of the Master Plan, right? That, that needs to be a part of it. The actual body that would be looking at things, there would be a secretary, right? These types of things would, would, would be developed, and the exact rules are really determined by, by the council. So what, how strong of a commission is really up to the ordinance.
So just, so, just for clarity, so you mentioned that this falls under Land Use Law, but that in addition to that, it would require municipal ordinance in order to establish the commission or have that right?
Right.
Like, how do we begin, like, how do we begin the process?
It's my understanding that, yeah, so it's my understanding that, one, there would need to be buy-in for, and I don't know which comes first, to be honest with you, whether it would be the, I'm pretty sure it's actually the Borough Ordinance, which basically, you know, these things, they come in a series or wave of ordinances. There's the ordinance to have a commission, then there's the ordinance for the, the, the planning element of the Master Plan, you know, for the, for the planner to do his part. So I'm pretty sure that the first is to the ordinance to have a commission, and then the other pieces start filling in. What that process looks like, I mean, I don't know, I would defer to...
Maybe we can have Peter weigh in?
So yes, that was going to be my next suggestion, to the coun, to my colleagues on the council, perhaps Peter could weigh in on this.
I can weigh in on the fact that if, if the borough is, mayor and council are interested in pursuing a commission potentially, certainly we can look into that. I think there are a couple of different places we want to get information from. One of those individuals would be your borough planner, who probably has information and input on the benefits and deficits of that. But it is as easy as adopting ordinance, but it's much, much complicated than just adopting ordinance. I mean, there are ramifications for what happens when you have one, there are things that may, so I think those are things that you want to look into, some to look into. But at this point, I, I don't have a ready-made, you know, answer to all the questions.
Well, I, I appreciate, you know, that maybe you just take a peek at it and let us know what the pros and the cons would be, so then we could discuss it as council at some point.
Yep, yep, I can do that.
That's at least one step. Right, George?
Appreciate it.
So Randy, I got a question for you. You know, most of the houses have been renovated that are historic in town, like, how much of a percentage do you have to have for it to be historic?
So, again, it really depends on how strong of an ordinance and how strict it is, right? I think when you have a weak commission, you're not, you're not forcing anybody to do anything necessarily. One thing that I'd like to point out, a very, a simple thing, you know, there's a lot of porches over the, even over the past five years where people put new railings in, right? They put in the ones that they get at Home Depot, and they're very tall, they're odd, and they definitely don't need to, because there are two codes, two building codes within New Jersey. There's one for older historic structures, and then there's one for modern structures. So, you know, it could even potentially benefit property owners where say, hey, you know, you can save money by rehabilitating this, and the, the commission would put a stop, you know, from them just doing it by right. It's just a check and a balance. In terms of reverting things back to what they used to look like, that gets a little bit more, not, I don't want to say arbitrary, but subject to interpretation. So if somebody says, I want to make a change to the front of this building, and it was in a historic district, it would come before a, a commission, and then you would go through the review, and they've already have things outlined of what is and what isn't of, of really of a concern. And I think, I brought this up in the past, you know, there's certain things like maybe solar panels. If there's things that go against priorities within the borough, maybe that architectural detail of that roof, you know, like the slate roof, okay, we understand it's going to be a lot more money to replace in kind, and because we're not trying to provide a, a hardship to the residents, because that's the other thing. If a resident says, this is a hardship, it's just like anything else that comes before, like a planning board. You, you guys could have the final say for an applicant, if it were to get that far. But it would be mostly a way, of a means to inform the property owners when they want to make a change, that this is where, this is where you're at, and by contributing in kind, you can not only maybe save money in the process, but also you'd be beautifying the community.
And then as Barbara, to John's point, Barbara had mentioned, you could do it in small areas, like you could, yeah.
Right.
I mean, that's how you could keep something...
So usually the way things, and especially in larger cities and municipalities, there will be a Historic Preservation Commission, and then some sort of district, which is just one designated area, it doesn't necessarily have to have the natural boundaries, but should have some logic. And then when that district is created, you start defining the historic character elements and say, you know what, this is a district because. And then, you know, that's the, that's what really guides, guides the rules, you know, the unique characteristics. And it can be small, it could be the whole town, but we're not trying to do that, we're trying to do it in, in small sections for a variety of reasons.
Does that create a challenge when you do it in small sections in the sense of, if, if I'm in a small section and my neighbor's not, just because the line is repaired, and my porch is, is in need of repair, and I'm forced to follow a pattern that causes me, costs me an exhaustive sum? It, that, that's where I wonder, is that we're a small town, and we certainly do have clusters of houses that are different and similar, almost, you know, inner space, you have to go down Main Street, I do see some of those nice wraparound porches, and I do see a lot of nice aspects. But I did wonder, too, is that, is it attributed to someone who bought their house 40 years ago, that when our house becomes historic, they'll have to, the buyer may have to look at it and go, oh, by the way, if you want to replace the deck porch, expect that it's going to be 30% over the, the house next to it, or the house over there, even though the house in many ways does not create or distort determination, does not create a greater value for the result.
Well, see, that's just false. I mean, there are, every historic district that I've ever been to, property values have increased.
But if we're doing small, so the property values of arbitrarily of three, four houses in a small cluster...
But it's not, it's not arbitrary. I mean, it could be, but that's why during the process, you define lines which have some logic and reason. It's just like any other planning process, you know? You'd look at something and say, you know, we could do it here, we could do it there, but this doesn't really make sense. And it becomes a consensus that the body would, would look at, anything that would come, that the commission would, would vote on, the council would, would, if it's a weak commission, they would have to approve it anyway. So any of the arbitrariness would be likely not existent.
Would the people or the owners of the houses have the option to opt in or out of that generally, or is it, it's just told to them, their house has now become this, and with that they have a new set of rules?
Well, the only real obligation to, to a property owner is that they can't do things necessarily outright. So if they wanted to demolish a section or rehabilitate something, rather than them having to, you know, they go to get their permit, they would say, hold on, this needs to come under review. What's your plan? Right? Fundamentally, that's the most basic obstacle that a property owner would run into, and depending on what that plan is, you know, it would either be accepted by, by the board or by the commission, or it wouldn't. And as I've said, we're not trying to create any hardships to, to, to any residents, but I can say that if the hardship were to fall on a developer that's doing things haphazardly and quickly, we would want to slow that down, because that's somebody that may be trying to demolish a building to turn it into a lot, which would take revenue from the borough, it would take away that rateable. This has already happened. So it's about preventing demolition in such a way, more so, more than ju, than, like, we even gave the example, trying to tell somebody, oh, you can't paint it this way or paint it that way. When it come, we're, we're not trying to recreate what something looked like, we're not going to require people to recreate what it was. Does that make sense?
It, it does, I just, I mean, we don't have a tremendous amount of development that goes on. I just more wonder is that a home that was purchased pre-being designated historic, then it falls under different laws or different controls than the idea of being grandfathered to something? If it wasn't, and now it is, that is convenient for some or inconvenient for others?
Well, I, I can tell you that during the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan, nobody seemed to have that opinion who showed up, at least I never heard it.
Were homeowners directly so affected by that?
There were, well, the people who attended, I assume that homeowners or property owners that were a part of that rehabilitation plan showed up. I mean, it would only make sense. I'm sure other people did, too. If a commission were to be formed and an ordinance were to come, come to a vote, I'm sure that those people would be notified, and they would have a chance to speak like they do at any other, you know, any other ordinance reading, and they would let you know if they think it's a bad idea or a good idea.
Good question. So what year is this that you're, you're particularly giving this presentation? Is it like three, four?
It's about, yeah, it's funny, I actually reviewed my preserv, my presentations and notes from, I think it was 2022, so...
Okay, so, three years, four years?
Yeah, four years, something.
But I don't remember, this is the first time that I've seen the historic district kind of thrown into this presentation. So it's interesting, you know? Again, it's, it's interesting that, you know, the South Main Street Rehab kind of already accomplishes that part of town, and somehow you folks have figured out, done the work, that there's actually history there. Schwendeman, Mr. Brown, Philip Schlosser, you know, so, interesting.
Yeah, and so, just, just so you know, there was a, an architectural report done by the county in 1978 that identified at that time potential historic properties. And then in around 2005, maybe 2009, the Historic Preservation Committee at that time retook the photos, put together a map, and that's where you saw that excerpt for, where these houses had numbers associated with them. And so there was a potential concept of what, where these historic buildings already are, so a lot of the work already exists. It's a matter of, okay, would we want to set the boundaries here or there, or, or, you know, whatever, whatever makes sense, but we're not really at that, that point, at least not right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now is the time for public comment, limited to the resolutions listed on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address with record. Again, this is the public portion, is limited to the comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit set forth by the borough's council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address with record.
You have anyone want to raise your hand? Need help, Alma? Okay. Need help, or you, okay?
Okay, Mike, thank you. Alma Applegate of 66 Miller's Lane, Milltown, New Jersey, and I'm here to wonder why we can't get our road fixed. I understand it's going to be, then it's not going to be. To me, right now, this road is my life. I'm 90, almost 97 years old. I get to like walking up and down the street. I can't do it. It's very hard. I got to watch every step because there are patches, there's big holes, there's stones where the trucks go up and down. I want to know why my road can't be fixed. I've been in Milltown 96 years, and I feel like I'm part of history. I've been in Milltown 96 years, and I feel like I'm part of history. That was interesting listening to him.
Alma, you are historic.
What?
You are historic. I do have news for you that, working with Lou from CMA, your road will be repaired, but it's going to be in the spring. It's Riva first and then Miller's Lane. It's on the schedule.
That's a promise?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's, I learned to walk, I used to walk all the way downtown and back, and now I can walk to the end of the lane and back.
So just to piggyback on what Gary was saying, it was brought up in our last DPW.
This big eye on that big eye.
The big eye on it.
It will be fixed.
And it was brought up, we had a meeting with CMA and it is on the list to be fixed.
Thank you.
I'll just add, my name is Michael Lubnanski. I actually live at 70 Miller's Lane, and that's where they dug the road up in front of my house and in front of Dave's house next door at 72. And that's what she's talking about. The road is more than halfway dug up, the dirt's sunk in, and it's in bad shape. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak about ordinance 25-1566, the flag policy.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution. What am I saying wrong?
Only ordinance.
Only, only resolutions.
Oh, I can't.
On the agenda.
Okay, so I'm not.
Correct. Yeah, correct. It's resolutions listed on the agenda.
I thought that was on the agenda. Okay. That was for you.
Seeing no more, I'll close public comment. Ordinance introduction first reading. This introduction on ordinance 25-1560, there will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. This introduction summary will be published as required by law and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on our website and bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1560 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 34, comprehensive development, Section 34-14, schedule of fees of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zabranah. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
This is the introduction on ordinance 25-1561. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. This introduction summary will be published as required by law and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on our website, bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Fridays. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1561 by title?
Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating $1,515,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,001,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the borough of Milltown in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zabranah, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments?
Yes, I'm not in favor of this right now. I was hoping that Mr. Carr would be here tonight because I have questions, and there's no one here that can answer the questions that I have. I expected him to be here tonight. I was hoping that we'll also be doing the second reading for the budget because I'd likely ask Joe Zenga some questions on this. And as it stands, I don't agree with this as it stands because there's no one to answer any questions that I have.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
No.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This introduction to ordinance 25-1562, there will be no public input on the ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by law and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of this ordinance will be posted on our website and bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the eight hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1562 by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a utility truck, appropriating $145,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $137,750 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the borough of Milltown in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zabranah, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
This is an introduction of ordinance 25-1563. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by law and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1563 by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a bucket truck, appropriating $230,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $218,500 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the borough of Milltown in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion. Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion made by Council President Zabranah, seconded by Councilman Collins. Is there any comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is an introduction of ordinance 25-1564. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. This is an introduction summary that will be published as required by law and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be placed on our website and bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1564 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 23, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 23-1.8, fees of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zabranah. Is there any, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Posnansky. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko? I'm sorry?
He didn't answer.
Oh, huh.
Thank you. Yes, aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
This is an introduction of ordinance 25-1565. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. This introduction summary will be published as required by law and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on our website and bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1556 by title?
Ordinance 25-1565, ordinance amending Chapter 14, Parks and Recreational Areas, Section 14-7.2, Recreation Program Fees of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Order any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
This is an introduction to ordinance 25-1566. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by law and a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 9, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on our website and bulletin board at the municipal building and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1566 by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Administration of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Milltown, to add Article 89, Flag Policy.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Council President Zabranah. Is there any comments?
Yes. I have different concerns. I have concerns of legal complications by leaving possible. Seven people appear picking and choosing which flags they deem acceptable, and I feel like we're ruling without the consent of the government. I believe this is an issue of flags that should be brought up to a referendum, to be voted on by the citizens of Milltown. I'm concerned, I'm also concerned with the religious liberty court. This came up last year, and it's interesting that it's coming up again. There was a case in Boston, it's Shirtlove versus the City of Boston. It's the Supreme Court held that the City of Boston violated the First Amendment rights by denying a Christian organization the right to raise a religious flag on the city flag pole, even though the city had previously allowed other groups to raise secular flags. The court determined that the city's flag raising program was not government speech, but rather public form for private expression, and therefore the city could not discriminate against the Christian flag based on its religious content.
Yes, I'd like to know why, we did this last year, why are we remaking the wheel here?
Because I was requested to draft.
Excuse me?
Someone requested that I draft.
Oh, so, so, I request the next year.
I don't, you don't decide the policy.
So if I want it next year, you can remake the wheel again, right?
Sure.
But at the taxpayer's expense.
Taxpayer expense. Yes, I do work for the borough, so.
Right, so I mean, we could just go next year and we could change it, and the next year we could change it, and the next year we could change it.
Sure, sure. Although, although.
Well, that doesn't make much sense.
Council Collins, the drafting ordinance is something that's covered by my attorney, so you don't pay extra. But they're going to become an act as councilor. Because then there are residents who are ready to come forward also. Councilman Posnansky, I just, you're directing this to me, so I'm merely explaining that I, I'm looking into it, but I don't know some social support coming. So I feel that we're becoming an act as councilor. My, well, the initial request that I received was for a resolution for the ability to place a flag on one of the flag poles that is not located outside the borough hall, in reviewing the ordinance that was drafted and passed by the council last year, that ordinance limits the flags that can fly on any borough property to a series of four enumerated flags. At that time, it was requested that I draft an ordinance that preserved the flags that could fly at the borough hall while creating the ability for the council to entertain requests for other flags to fly on other properties within the borough, while also maintaining the fact that the ultimate decision was by the council and it was the council's speech, it was not an open public forum, so that you did not advocate the concern that as a public forum, you were required to entertain anyone's speech on a flagpole. Because the only people who were going to speak on a flagpole would be the council of the borough of Milltown. That's why that was written. Well, I'll tell you my concerns also. We're $30 million in debt, we're owed $7 million for 23-acre derelict property in the center of town, drastic rises in water taxes, electric costs, empty storefronts, and empty lots. I believe our taxpayers, these are priorities, and we can't lose sight of this. I'm not regretting the fact that you.
I mean, I was happy with the ordinance we passed last year. You know, it's like, we're going to change it this year and next year, you know, it's like, this seems redundant to me.
Ah, progress, right? Progress.
Oh, so we've done it, we did it, and then we're going to redo it, and then we're going to redo it again. You know, it's like, is this the most important thing we have to do in the town?
But it's a different ask, John. It's different than what was discussed last year.
I don't see.
It's a new day.
I would defend, anyone who wants any of these flags that I know are being put up here, if you want them on your private home and someone tries to take it down, I'll be the first one in your house to defend that flag. But I don't feel the same way at the borough park or any of these other flag poles in town, when you have 7,000 residents and this accommodates very few. We were elected to think about the majority of people in town.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Menko?
No.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Mayor, we have a tie?
No.
Hm. Motion does not carry at this.
Authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have the authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-190 by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the borough of Milltown in the total amount of $4,027,529.15.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President.
Is there any comments or questions? Sorry. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabranah?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions on the agenda, listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member. If so removed, will be treated on as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by the certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and I will pull it from the consent resolution.
196, 201. 201. 204.
Councilman Collins, you good?
Yep.
Okay, let's check.
Thanks.
Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution minus 196, 201, 205?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain issues, and whereas actual common resolutions to be presented for Borough Council, it's made 2025, 194, and as a part of the Borough Council, resolutions. 2025, 196, 197 through 199, 202 to 204, 206 to 207. Now that we're being. Now that were be resolved by the Borough Council of Milltown, each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council, with the same meaning of fact as though each was written in its entire, and awaiting the twenty-two-five meeting, adopted by a separate.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zabrona. Is there any comments? Please call the roll.
Council President Zabrona?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Will the clerk please read resolution twenty-two-five dash one ninety-six, please, by title?
Authorizing certain actions now to actions construction.
Much pleasure, Council.
Make the motion, this resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion?
Number ninety-six?
Oh, okay, it's the plumbing, plumbing person. I had originally wanted this to be put up for bid, and, and it is not. I understand it's hard finding someone for this position, but I'd just like to vote separately on this.
You are voting separately on it?
I understand, but that's why I brought this up.
Okay. Is that it?
For that, yes.
Okay. Are there any concerns or regarding the candidate?
Microphone, please, Councilman.
Sorry, I mean, is there anything specific regarding the concerns or about what we're looking to do today?
I don't want to mention specific concerns. I'd just like to vote.
I just want to know, is this, does anybody know, is this his only job now? Because he retired from Milltown, because last time he had like three jobs, so we had trouble getting times for him.
This is, this is, he's being hired as part-time, just as the person who resigned is part-time.
Right.
So, I mean, it's an employment position, so it wouldn't go out to bid. It's, it's a job that was posted, it was posted on the League of Municipalities, it was posted on the Borough website.
He was the only respondent?
Yes, he was the only one, he was the only one that we got. He currently, he also works with our construction code official in the other town that he works in as well, so they work well together as it is. But it is a part-time position, just as the gentleman that resigned is part, or was part-time. Councilman Posnansky, could you please explain the reason why you pulled this resolution?
Would I explain?
Yeah, I'm just not clear.
Yes. He worked for us before, and I had heard some, some negative things. He also came to my house for, for a situation, and it did not resolve very well on his part, not mine.
So it's personal?
No, it's not personal.
Well, who did you hear from? Some people you heard from?
Yeah, do you want me to give you names?
Well, I think it's like, you know, hearsay, yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to vote no on this, is that okay with you?
No, that's fine, we should get into a discussion of some lines.
Right. You should not be discussing your personal, your actions.
Well, I was asked something.
Yeah.
I didn't want to mention anything. I just wanted to vote.
Well, then you shouldn't have pulled it and voted no against it, right? That's your option.
Well, I'd have to vote no or yes on everything else, okay?
If, if I may, in order for anyone to decide to vote separately and differently on any particular resolution, it needs to be polled otherwise.
That's correct.
They need to vote against the entire consent agenda, which they may not want to do, so.
That's correct, Ms. Payne.
Well, I asked, all I asked you was for clarification, why you pulled it. I wasn't questioning the process. That's all I was asking.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Zabrona?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Will the clerk please read resolution twenty-two-five two oh one by title?
Amending resolution twenty-two-five dash seventy-nine, interim part-time business administrator for the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I had concerns. I, I, I was hoping that, that Mr. Carr would be here tonight, and, and that's a part of this, is that I had asked last time if we could accommodate him, because we have a difficult time when there should be a business, business administrator by stat statutes, attending meetings for council and mayor, president, and I had questions for him tonight that cannot be answered. And I don't just want to be able to contact him at home or at his other place of employment, I'd like to ask questions here for the transparency of the citizens in this town. So, that is, that is what I brought this up for. We're doubling his salary, and, and he's, he's not present, and I understand at times he may be, but at times like this, when I feel like he's needed, he is not here. So I'm sorry, I can't be long.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. No, that's fine. I feel that Fred has done effective work for us. I feel that his salary is, if anything, I would say it's below what the rest of the state would consider commensary, whatever that fancy word is, that's equal to his performance or title. Thank you. But I will take away your pen, and next time you bring up a statue like that. But I just feel the, and being as his entire situation of still being in Milltown, which hasn't always been a very smooth ride for him, I consider that a boon to the town. I've come to respect his opinion immensely, and I think that as we have not had a candidate that sufficiently met anyone's opinion on the personnel committee, that really had no experience and nothing to offer the town but doubt and risks. I like him, I'm okay if he can't be here for these meetings. I think he can make himself successful during the week. I think we all have work from home, all kinds of extenuating circumstances in this world, and, you know, emails, phone calls, anything we need to get, we can certainly get before tonight, and the questions, if you want to have transparent, he can certainly answer, and you can simply state them if you feel they'll need to be stated. But as for a boat that is sailing well, I will not knock the Fred Carr boat. Have a microphone.
I would like to add to Councilman, Councilman Manko's comments, that Mr. Carr is readily available. Every time that I have a question, I email, or we have a phone conversation, and just like Councilman Manko suggested, that if you wanted the transparency for the public, then you could report to the public on a question that any council member could ask our business administrator, and, and that is how you can be, you know, if it's important for any council member to say this out loud to the public, you have every opportunity to do that. So I just want to reiterate that Mr. Carr is always accessible, always responsive, in a timely manner, always returns emails, phone calls, there is never one thing where there's a misstep on communication with him.
I'd just like to add that Mr. Carr's always been very professional, and, you know, he's always given us answers, and we're kind of in a bind right now, with a lack of talent available, and the talent pool, as we've saw with the past plumbing inspector, that there's always so many applicants for these jobs, and it's, right now it's hard to find, so I guess we're just gonna have to, we have to do what we have to do to keep the town running, so that's all I have to say.
I also agree with everybody said, and applaud the personnel committee for putting those forward.
And just, just to be fair, he did mention that he would not be here tonight more than a week ago, because he's presenting the spots with budget tonight.
Correct.
So he made sure to take care of our budget first before he took care of that budget. That's why he's not here.
And the council had timely notice that he wasn't going to be present, so any questions could have been directed to him.
And, and let's be realistic, right? So we don't, we don't have, we have a part-time BA who's a full-time BA in another town, and he's doing a great job. And let's be realistic, he's probably gonna be here the rest of the year. I don't know if we're going to find someone to do the rest of the year. We're lucky to have him, he's doing a good job.
Are we actively looking for another yet? Full-time?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, the listings are still there, it is just a limited pool of talent to draw from, and not a great pool.
And, and again, I will stress that let's be realistic, if you really want something answered, call him, I call him.
I want an answer here. I want a little transparency of the people watching here.
Try to be realistic here, try to be realistic.
But the compromise we have to make is that if we have, if we're gonna have someone, we have someone, and they are effective at their job, and not for nothing, we got a budget in in what is almost effectively the first quarter of the year, as opposed to previous years, where, you know, where that hasn't happened, from a part-time standpoint. You know, I mean, if I'm gonna rate his performance, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna do it online, and if, I mean, I understand what you're saying is that you like the, lack of a better word I'm gonna say to the dog pony show, of being able to have that conversation here and in public, so that you can present that information, but that information can be done in the same, in an email you send to him where he gives you the answers, you can simply refer to the same information that you would wish him to be able to accompany with, and you can do it concert together.
I understand what you're saying, but if you look at the state statutes, which, which has laws that'll be gone by, the person in his position should be here, and I appreciate what he does, I think he's done a great job, he's bailed us out, he bailed us out last year, he's doing the same this year by working, his other job of working here part-time, but I really would like his presence here.
And as much as I understand that, I think the state also has grown to understand that in a, in a timeframe where BA's are in short supply and necessary by every town.
What do you mean the state that's come up?
Well, as you say, that sometimes the state wants. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabrona?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Will clerk please read resolution twenty-two-five two oh five by title?
Resolution of the Borough of Milltown County of Middlesex State of New Jersey, authorizing the award of bid for the operation of the Milltown Battery Storage Facility.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Zabrona. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is. We were involved in this early on, and this comes up to me as a surprise right now, that they asked me about five hundred thousand dollars for a year for fifteen years. I had not heard that before. When the presentation was made, the idea was that we get this system free, and they take thirty percent. So this, this five hundred thousand could be a part of that, but it has never been detailed before. And when I speak at the senior center, and the people ask questions, I go with that thirty percent. What I see now, I don't understand, and also to go into, unfortunately, Mr. Carr's not being here tonight, there are questions on this that I would like to ask him, and there's no one here to ask. I've been to the battery backup site in South River, has anyone else out here been there? Thank you.
I don't know what that has to do with the half a million dollars, but that's fine. And again, I'm sure that.
I've also contacted.
Is your question about the money, or is your question about the battery, the physical presence of the battery? Because they're both valid questions, and they're both open for discussion.
I've been contacted, I've been contacted people at that site, at the site in Ohio, so I researched this, and this part with the money, I have not heard come up before.
So that's a valid question. It is a, it is a shame to wait until now to ask a question.
What do you mean it's a shame to ask that? That just came out in the, in the children's package this weekend. And today is Wednesday.
Let's, let's ask our engineers. Sorry, buddy, is this standard operating procedure they use on their systems that they have these guys operate?
We have not been involved in reviewing the bids, so that I really can't answer. We were, as you know, developed the site plan, and we were present at the bid opening, and that was reviewed by your QPA, your county administrator, and your CFO.
So you don't know if they use an operating partner in this or not?
Well, I think that I can tell you a little about the way the bid was prepared. You advertised for a vendor to basically install batteries, so that when your peak loads arrived at the borough, it would offset those peaks of the battery system.
Mr. McLoane, is this the same vendor that installed South Rivers?
That's my understanding, that's correct.
Okay, so basically what this vendor, what that fee is, or what that percentage is, is they actually monitor the grid, and they ensure that they hit, I think the spec is hitting five peak demand days?
That's approximately what the estimate was, that's correct.
I think it's five, so that, if they miss those peak demand days, then they have to pay the borough X percentage, but it's actually, that's what the cost is to monitor the grid. Then through the course of the year, they actually operate the batteries, so you, you won't even notice it, but they'll operate the batteries off the grid to, to maintain the batteries, run them down, power them back up to maintain the batteries as full, as a full charge.
So it's sometimes referred to as peak shaving.
Yeah, that's right.
So it is presumed that the financial boon that will come from the batteries will outpace the investment?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yes, so we're basically, it should be positive cash flow.
That's my understanding.
For the town, and should save, or should, and that should be, again, for the life of this, when you say fifteen years of that payment, the excess windfall that, that becomes money for the town will be over the next fifteen years, we will make money off of that. So it does, it does balance in the book.
Councilman Manko, just with the materials, I believe, that was provided with the packet, there was the bid submittal from the entity that you would be awarding to tonight, and according to their bid, the net benefit to the borough would be five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and that is net of their monthly fee and their sharing costs.
And I would also like to add that Mr. Zenga alerted the entire council with regard to this issue, and he also said that if anybody had any questions to filter, to call him. Yeah, the email went out last night explaining the savings and, and the percentages and everything else. Yep.
And also, to my knowledge, this company's been very successful in managing the battery project, too.
Yeah, South River's actually installing a second ten-megawatt system right next to the existing ten-megawatt system, so it is very beneficial for the town of South River.
And their system has been effective and safe, and our system will be the better technology, most current technology available for both its safety and its performance. And I also feel that of the few resources we have to try and better prepare our town and our citizens for the oncoming changes in the future, that fossil fuels are going to be in higher demand, everything will be up, I see no other options, other than trying to do something good for them, and this came in at the.
Being proactive.
Being proactive, which, you know, last year we did with our, with our water billing and some of these things, it's the future, we need to, you know, we need to, we don't need to go to the store the night before the storm. And I just thank everybody who came up with this plan and brought it to us, I think that guy's not here either, but if anyone sees him, so. Yes. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zabrona?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
A thousand times aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Reports from elected officials, Council President Zabrona.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next HRC meeting will be next Tuesday, seven p.m. via Zoom. Following Tuesday will be revitalization. Following Tuesday will be revitalization committee meeting, 7:30 PM via Zoom. Would like to let everybody know, if they have not already heard, that Community Pass is open for Milltown Day registrations and sponsorships. Go to the Community Pass for Milltown Day and register. Again, Milltown Day will be on Saturday, September 27th. Hope that you make a booking for that day. And that concludes my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two short reports. I'd just like to thank all the members of the Board of Health that participated in last night's rabies clinic. I'd like to thank Victoria from the county, Dr. Joseph Chiosi from the Searbrook Vet, and his assistant Karen, and we, they did 75 vaccinations for animals last night for rabies, so it was, it was pretty impressive. That's the most we've had since the, in the new building. We used to have 150 out in the old building, but now we're, we're starting to build on that, I guess people can find out where it's at now. So, a next report, where is it here? Just got a short report from the library. Thursday, May 29th, and June 5th, craft noon at 3:00 PM. Saturday, May 31st, crochet for beginners, 11:00 AM. Monday, June 2nd, adult yoga at 9:15, and Emily Dickinson, the belle of Amherst, at 6:30. Tuesday, June 3rd, after school bingo at 3:00 PM. And Wednesday, June 4th, will be the color purple. And that concludes my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mankow?
In a brief report, I will say that the, the Milltown Council recently approved the bid for the battery project, so that's moving forward. And as well, a two truck, he was actually quite early in the year, speaking with the DPW and the Water Department, their, a lot of their machinery was in dire need, they were using personal trucks and personal style, you know, more non-commercial style vehicles to get things done. And I do think that we need to consider investing better in them every year we can down the road. I know that there was talk, one of the wish lists that they had was for an excavator, and also a wish list was a, a road saw, being, and not that we're gonna do anything about it tonight, but just to keep in mind, the work that was done over on Rogers Lane during the winter, that was very costly, our guys couldn't do with the current tools that they have. The saw that they're looking at is a road saw that would take a 42-inch blade, allowing roughly one-third of that of a cut, 18 inches down. With an excavator, they could do that work themselves. Each one of those breaks in that small area of Rogers Lane were, on the average, I think, $60,000 per, so, much like with the battery project, takes money sometimes to make money, or to save money. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief report, I attended the Rescue Squad Open House on Sunday, May 18th, and so I just want to remind the public, if you would consider generously donating to the Rescue Squad during their ongoing drive, they do wonderful work. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Posniewski?
Sure. I have two reports tonight. First is the Senior Center. During the month of May, they had three wonderful presentations. The first was May 13th, presented by Milltown Rescue Squad, and the other was May 22nd, by our police liaison, Nick Olasinski. Both presentations were very informative, provided our seniors with a plethora of resources. I want to acknowledge and thank both members of Milltown Rescue Squad, Lieutenant Will Kaplan and Nick Olasinski, for their genuine concern, care, and dedication for our senior residents. We truly love having you at the Senior Center, and look forward to your next visit. Also, there was a class from Parkland. The kids came over to entertain the seniors, it was a charming dance and singing performance. They did a medley of nine Disney classics, and I saw people smile that I never knew had it in them there. It really entertained the seniors, it was very, very nice. Wednesday, June 4th, there's a bus trip, 9:30, to Camilla's. Monday, June 16th, 9:30, there's a bus, bus trip to Ollies and Trader Joe's. Monday, June 23rd, 11:00 AM, bus trip to Marina Grill. Tuesday, June 24th, 9:30, a bus trip to Ross and Lawrenceville. The VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Tuesday, June 17th, from 12 to 3. Also, the DPW report, we have had two very important and meaningful DPW meetings with Ralph Chazanasky and CMA this month. There are numerous state aid grants available to us, such as municipal aid in form of bridge preservation, bikeway, pedestrian safety, quality of life, and this could include historic preservation, roadway preservation, et cetera. Safe streets to transit projects could include safety enhancements for pedestrian access to transit stops. This would be addressing the crosswalks that we have, 10 to 12 crosswalks that need to be redone, street headings of, of these important streets. We spoke about adding more flashing lights at crossing guard locations, we talked about two most pressing road renovations for the spring of 2026. The first being Reeve Avenue, next being Miller's Lane, and unfortunately, she's gone, because I wrote Alma, I hope you're listening, this one's for you. We also have a possible Mill Pond Bike Path redo, the wooden crossing bridge needs to be redone also, and hopefully this gets, gets in the queue for next year. Northbrook Drive was progressing beautifully, and I hope the residents enjoy their new road. Albert Avenue Park Bike Path is expected to begin June 9th, shovel's in the ground. And the cul-de-sac of Foch Avenue, he's fouched, and the main street, the water issue at the top of, of Main Street will be resolved, and hopefully gets, gets going as we're able. A lot of the projects and the works, yeah, we pushed through for transparency for the residents. And I just have a question for Councilman Mankow, sorry, it's about metering for the pool water, I know that we've discussed that, and I was wondering if there's anything that's been talked about as far as the new season?
I believe we're gonna be, meter will be on there for this, for this season.
How so?
How so? Physically, they install?
Sure. If I can, if I can help focus on.
I'm just not sure I have a question.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Don Herman, who's the Super Teddy Water Attorney. They had measured the water going into the pool last year through a use of a hydrant meter, so that's one way of doing it. They have a number that they used last year, and questions, do you want to meter again? It's gonna be the same volume of the pool, so there's really not a difference, so I think that as long as there was no concern about that metering process, then you can still use the same number.
The reason I ask is that, because we, we highly subsidize the pool, to 175,000 a year.
The pool's filled with hydrants.
No, 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 I understand, but I'm just saying that the township, the taxpayers subsidize the pool, and anything we can do to, to figure where the, the water's going, coming and going, would be a big help.
You have the results from last year.
And, and I do know the pool underwent several repairs, significant repairs, there was cracking, there was some leaking that was taken care of. I remember the rec department speaking about that earlier this year, and it is up there running, and fresh and clean after all the repairs. So it should be a more efficient unit as it goes, but, but it is, in, in similar, but, you know, just to mention in the same pattern, the things that, the amenities that are offered to our town that create the joy, the prosperity of living in a town, where you can drop your kids to the pool, and they can have a happy day, is part of the package of what people live in Milltown for. And in some ways, if you want families of four and five to live in Milltown, sustain Milltown, and pay taxes, and pay for water, and be part of that package, we have to have things for them that, besides a high water bill and a high electric bill, we have to have things to keep them in this town, and to make Milltown market to a family that wants to move somewhere if they decide to, you know, at some point, when those families stop living in Milltown, four-bedroom houses become two-bedroom apartments, two, two-bedroom apartments, it becomes a whole different town. And, you know, the historical society wants to preserve things, and that's a separate matter, but I'm only in that what we, what I feel, I truly, I moved here 12 years ago, because I fell in love with the town from meeting people, coming to 4th of July, a Christmas tree lighting. The dollars that we spend in supporting what makes this town a place where our kids are happy, our people are happy, I could hate the coach as much as I want, but if my team's winning and my kids happy, I'm gonna play nice with the coach. And I think in some ways, the overall finance, maybe, I'm sorry, I digress, but I just mean, we need to, we need, you know, I give a truth saying, too, we do need to fix the fence and manage it.
God, I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, you're fine.
This is reports, you guys are gonna have your time for Councilman Collins at the end.
Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the great segue to the Milltown Recreation Department. All adult and youth programs are currently up, running with excellent registration numbers. A new six-week Pilates program was introduced in Milltown this spring, it received an outstanding response with 29 participants and a very positive feedback. The Coed softball league kicked off its third season April 28th with six teams. Despite a few rainouts, games will be rescheduled, and the championship game will be adjusted accordingly. Albert Avenue Camp and CIT registration open on Tuesday, May 13th, and will close on June 15th. Camp runs from June 30th to August 8th. Camp trip registration will open by June 1st. Pool memberships went on sale May 13th. The pool plans to open Saturday, June 14th, and will close on Labor Day, September 1st. Splash Squad is returning for its second season, it runs from July 14th to August 24th. Registration is available via Community Pass. We'll be teaming up with East Project to conduct a multi-sport camp. The camp will be conducted at Hefflin Farms from August 18th to August 21st, from 9:00 to 12:00, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Please visit Community Pass to register. Registration for summer tennis classes opens Friday, May 30th. Classes will be held at the Parton Tennis Courts from July 8th to August 12th, registration via Community Pass. Summer chess and cartoon drawing classes, registration is open, please visit Community Pass to register. And Milltown town Sandy Malowski will lead basketball clinics for girls and boys in grades fourth and fifth and sixth through eighth grade. This one-day clinic will be held at Joyce, Joyce Kimber School Gymnasium. The clinic for the girls will take place on June 9th, and the boys on June 12th, please visit Community Pass to register. And finally, for the Recreation Department, we had a successful Recreation Advisory Committee on Tuesday, May 20th. From the Planning Board, we will be having, I have my packet right here, we will be having a Planning Board meeting on June 4th. And from the Milltown 4th of July Organization, with less than two months away from our big day in Milltown, the 4th of July Organization continues to thank everyone for their continued support. Don't forget to participate in our Super 50-50 Raffle to win up to $10,000, limited tickets are still available. And if you're interested in becoming a sponsor or participating in the parade, please email us at milltown4th@gmail.com. For more information, please visit our Motown 4th of July website, or follow us on Facebook and Instagram, and Mr. Mayor concludes the report.
Thank you. For professionals, for attorney, Peter Bigel?
New report, Mr. Mayor.
See me?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an update on the water meter project. To date, 1,495 meters have been replaced, that's 57% of the total. Eight others are complete and are being validated, 48 are incomplete, 298 are currently scheduled, and unfortunately, there are still 747 property owners who have not responded to the letters that were sent to them to schedule their meter replacements.
For our Administrator Fred Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just go, since I just showed up here to go on Lou's comment, we're having a real problem, and you all have the email that I sent showing the, our, you know, our friends and neighbors who have not contacted the, our, our vendor to replace the meters, and there may come a time where we're gonna have to take hard action and turn off people's water for denying us access to our property. It's holding up the project, it's, it's, it's not invasive, we're not collecting, you know, secret data, we just wanna replace your water meter, so that we can accurately account for the water that goes through your meter, and, and have a good accounting for our water system. As we've talked about, we're gonna put meters in the pool and the borough buildings, and all these kinds of places that we've never metered water before. So if, you know, anyone's out there listening and you haven't contacted the 800 number yet, I encourage you to do so. Just call the number, they will tell you what days are available, they will work with you, they work on the weekends, they work at night. If there's something wrong, the engineering firm, the borough, you know, the contractor engineer, Don and the Boys in the Water Department will fix the meter, they break it, they break, and they break the pipe in your house, because your pipe has been there since forever, okay? They'll fix that, too, okay? Just let them in your house, they replace the meter, and so we can move on and fix something else.
And Fred, I also want to add, right now, that is free under the grant that we have.
It's free, yes.
Once that contract ends, then the borough has to pay to have those meters replaced, right?
So we've got all these free meters, we've got all this free money, to, to do what's right for the town, and we just don't wanna do that by coming back later on and now charging the, you know, the water budget for something that we could have done for free.
Correct.
And even worse, the plan doesn't move forward to what saves the town money, unless the whole thing is done.
Well, you know, it's, it's economies of scale, you know, the more we account for our water, the better it is. I mean, we've got, as you, we talked all last year, you know, talked about, you know, 20 million gallons of unaccounted-for water, you know? We need to be able to say yes, we didn't, no we didn't. So get ahold of your friends and neighbors, tell them to get off the dime, tell them to replace the meter, you know, or I'm gonna have to send Don Herman up there to bother them.
And for.
Nobody wants that, for like 25 minutes.
And Fred.
Okay, Clark? You have a report, please?
I just wanted to announce summer hours will begin next week, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM for the borough, and Fridays, 8:00, 8:12.
Does any member in council have any old business to bring before council?
Yes, Fred, I was interested in that, we were talking about those water meter replacements. I, I think maybe we should send a red card out to people and say, you know, this is the final, and if you don't get the water meter, we can roll the cost of the meter into your new bill. So that might be something that we could do.
You know, we'll, we'll consider that, I mean, we've already sent two letters out to people saying, you know.
Right, you gotta send it like the red letter, you know, so everybody reads it.
Like in soccer?
Yeah, I guess.
Like a red card?
A red card, yeah, we can do that.
Maybe, maybe a test shut-off date, somewhere in, you know, late August, we just shut them off for three days and go, by the way, this is what happens in September.
I don't know, if I wanna get that drastic, that's sort of arbitrary.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it during the holidays, that's what I'm worried about, is, you know.
We'll do that, I understand.
So.
I don't wanna be totally arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable, but I can be.
Does any member of council have any new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Dave and I would like to talk about a situation on Garver with respect to fire trucks and delivery trucks like UPS not being able to drive through because of parking on both sides of the street. So we did some research, Public Safety Committee spoke with the chief, you know, and so Dave's gonna just fill in on some of the details.
Yeah, so I want to just inform the entire council on Easter, this past Easter, there was a fire on Garver, and because of the parking on that street, our fire, the fire apparatus almost didn't make it, you know, in time, but they got there quickly, they moved cars, but, so we informed the, the Chief Johnson and Ralph to go there and take a look at Garver, and give us your opinion on what we should do to make it safe for, like, fire apparatus, emergency vehicles, and also, too, I also told you the UPS driver, for him to get down that street, he has to drive down halfway. he has to drive down halfway, and then I should just back up and go around cause you kinda can't get around that bend if there are cars on that bend. So what I would like to do is just ask councils, we can, I could forward the email to Peter and he can draft an ordinance for proper parking on Garver. There's any objections to that? Peter.
We actually tried to do this last year. Along with other, other things, but we're, we're talking, so there is a statement that, you know, has, you know, the certain corners, fire, but Garver is a main issue in the town. So we'd like to see if we can push that forward, that ordinance for next introduction.
Comments, questions, concerns?
I'm for us addressing that. I know we had a package. The package didn't go through, but Garver was definitely, even I think Ray Jolly at some point had taken a ride by there and was like, yeah, this is just waiting to, waiting to be a tragedy, I think was, so.
I can certainly put that together.
I can certainly put that together.
You're gonna get it.
Peter, thank you, I'll, I'll forward you the email.
We certainly don't wanna put anybody or anybody's house in jeopardy with, with a fire situation, you know? So something has to be done.
Thank you.
All right, are we still on new business?
Yes.
I know we at some point talked about last year, the ordinance that would, I guess, involve, for lack of a better word, say site hygiene of buildings that have been taken down or demolished properties. And I think, I just think it's something we should, we should relook at that, if we can get that in front of us again. Did you, did you have one and we, we just never really got that?
I started the whole, and I did not get to the end. As, as you were well aware, frequently fires arise that need to be put out and, you know, we don't get.
That was last year, I'm sure?
What's that?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I mean, listen, any given day, I can start off with anything. And I get a phone call and there's something else that pops up for the borough that I need to address. So certainly I can dust off what I have and try to get the whole rolling again.
I guess the question would be, does the rest of the council see that as something we can do? Is that a priority or is it?
The question, or the issue I would raise is that you have a finite amount of manpower in your borough, and the person who you would likely task with this is your code enforcement officer, who already has a number of things that he is attempting to get to on your behalf. So tasking him with something that he can't accomplish is going to create an issue. So just something to take into consideration is by creating an ordinance that creates an obligation on the borough to police that ordinance and enforce it could create a problem for you. So that's the only thing I would add to that, is you may be in a position where you, A, either decide you don't wanna adopt it because you can't put something else on his shoulders, or alternatively have to hire someone else to assist him in attempting to, you know, fulfill his duties to the borough. So that's. But it is a good idea, we should look to see if.
I'm gonna discuss that, cause I had this for tonight, I'm not gonna get into the main ordinance I have on, but I've been in touch with Mr. O'Neil about, about doing this, he's our zoning officer, about the derelict and empty properties on Main Street. And I'm hoping that with empty lot apartments that I know that you've been working on, that we can move things moving, get some reconstruction, beautification on Main Street for our residents. We've lived too long with the neglect of our once beautiful Main Street, which has fallen into decay and complacency. Taxpayers and residents deserve a beautiful fiber in a town full of energy again, working together, we can make this happen.
Just, just so we understand, if we create a vacant property registration ordinance, it's a registration ordinance, it is not going to compel anyone to develop the property. Just so we're all on the same page, there's no ordinance you can create that says you have to do something with the property that's vacant. They, they are, someone who has vacant property is entitled to keep it vacant for as long as they'd like to.
Indeed, indeed, I'm just looking for hygiene. But maybe rather than making him draft that now, if we can budget in the idea of next year, maybe when we're not paying for God to go check meters, maybe augmenting the workforce of the people who are gonna give out those summons for the way those sites are, the state of those sites, whether they're, you know, just the overall hygiene of them and safety and, you know, maybe, if we, yes, there's no need doing it when we can't get it done properly.
Well, just so you understand also, there's, there's gonna be a reporting requirement to it because most of the vacant property registration ordinances create an obligation to register, they create the ability to lean a property. What will pop up is every time a property is sold, someone is going to want to contact the borough to make sure that that property that is being sold isn't on the list and there aren't leans on the property based upon that, so when the closing happens, the new property owner doesn't have an issue. So you're going to need to have manpower available on a pretty regular basis so that people who are trying to do transactions can get that information. Otherwise, you're gonna run the risk of holding up people's ability to close title on purchases and sales because of that ordinance. So just, there's a lot of moving parts to this, it's, it's not as easy as just deciding you want to adopt an ordinance and have people register and collect fees and find out what's going on. So just, so we understand.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification, and I pause my request.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Open, this is open to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council respects the public's time by refraining from any comments until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder that under rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of the meeting is limited to five minutes. In May, after other speakers have finished, be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Rich Revolinski, currently still at fourteen Elmwood Drive. You guys make it so worthwhile coming back. I had a great time tonight, seeing familiar faces, hearing familiar stories. What brings me in tonight, as some of you may or may not know, I'm selling my home. Lifelong Milltown resident, moving out. And as I drive around and look at the for-sale signs and see if it's a clear direction in my house, I notice places like two oh three South Main. Now, we had talked about community preservation and historical preservation, that's great. I don't think it applies to grass that's been grown for the last five years, isn't up to my waist. I, just a guess. I wanna thank Councilman Manko for bringing up that vacant lot ordinance. Not too happy to hear about the fact that we don't do things that will make this town better is simply because we don't have the employees to do it. I think that there's plenty of opportunity to bring on employees, especially when you have things like rental registrations and strict fines for people not complying. When you have a lot of students going to the schools that are technically not Milltown residents, that are costing the borough money in that regard, I think it's worth the investment to hire those personnel and to create these ordinances and institute a policy that keeps this town beautiful, at least to the extent that we can control, cause we all know Ford Avenue, we just simply can't control that all the time. Mr. McClellan, you had mentioned that last year we metered the water that was going into the pool. You are correct, to about seventy-five, eighty percent there. I had gone down when they were cleaning the pool, we noticed the cracks, and at that time, they were hosing power washing the, the pool itself with hydrant water. That wasn't metered until I had said, are we gonna put a meter on that so we actually know how much water's being used? So I would highly recommend that if you guys are interested, find out how much total water is used for the pool. So I would start before they begin the opening process and cleaning it all off. Just food for thought, could be five hundred gallons, could be five thousand, don't know. God, there was a lot. I feel like Dave Matthews Band, you know, so much to say, so much to say. Monica, thank you for your time here. It's nice to see that you're moving on, we've got a new clerk. Someone said earlier that not everybody was here to thank for the battery project. I'm really happy to see that you guys moved forward with that. It was brought to us on behalf of Fred Carr last year, as well as our previous borough auditor. The mayor and I helped push it through, and I'm glad to see our council president taking that and continuing to move that forward. I think it's gonna be a great benefit for the residents of this town in the near future. God, like I said, so much to say. It's been great, love y'all. Thanks for having me, and perhaps this won't be the last time I'm here. Thanks.
Seeing nobody else. Council comments. Would any member of council have any comments?
I have two things. It should be pleasant. First, I'd like to honor our Milltown Police Department and all the law enforcement. May fifteenth, this, this has passed, I didn't have time to bring it up then. May fifteenth marks National Law Enforcement Memorial Day. This is a day designed, designated to honor all law enforcement officers who have lost their lives bravely in the light of duty. We recognize those officers who made the ultimate sacrifice while protecting and serving the people of our nation. And there is a new medal of sacrifice awarded to families of officers who have fallen in the line of duty. The week also encompassing May fifteenth is also Police Week, where we honor our dedicated police officers here in Milltown and around the country. These brave, brave police officers leave their families every day to selflessly protect you and your families every day. If you feel safe in your lives, thank your law enforcement, especially your Milltown Police Department. And this is for Memorial Day, which was two days ago, but I'd like to talk about it now. I'd like to honor our fallen soldiers that were recognized by events on Monday. From our country's founding, revolution brought us who we are now. The citizen soldiers fought for the freedoms that we have here today. For almost two hundred and fifty years, the American soldier has made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and family selflessly. In particular today, I'm specifically honoring those gallant eighteen, nineteen-year-old boys, men, brothers, uncle, sons, who bravely, from the love of country, those they left behind and the American flag they held dear, gave up their tomorrows for here today. These brave stoic young souls spent their day on the beaches of Normandy, France, on June sixth, nineteen forty-four. Beaches with names like Omaha, where our boys were barraged by overwhelming and fierce firepower, to Utah Beach. Our allies and our pushed for Europe upheavals of Nazi fascism landed at Juno Sword and Gold Beaches. These patriotic heroes stormed these beaches so you can enjoy your days in your favorite beach today. And I'll quote John in fifteen thirty, "Greater love has no one than this, that someone lay down his life for his friends." These American soldiers sacrificed their young lives for loved ones, their country and their flag. The flag is an idea. Flag represents freedom. It does not represent a political party. It is what unifies us, it is in the heart of each of us if we let it, as Americans. Thank you.
I got some, so I did have the honor of being, worked with the project, the Purple Project this weekend, attended Memorial Garden that the council graciously approved. I would like also apologize just for not being at the last couple, last meeting, we didn't do much. But the two meetings previous, I got stuck on a plane, went up to Boston and sat in a plane there for a while, came back to Jersey. So I missed that meeting, but the Girl Scouts in that meeting, two of them, one of them being a rec. on the line, had asked to do a silver, there's a silver award, which was done this weekend at Senior Center. And it looked good. And it's just a positive thing. The Memorial Garden went up really quickly, it really did come together nicely. There were a lot of donations, it was, all donations, Mike's Country Market. I mean, some of the people who were organizing it, let me say, intentions ten, organizational skills minus three, Mike's Country Market worked with them really. And they came through with some good stuff. People called Mike's Country Market and just kinda threw money at them going, whatever those guys have. And Mike kinda like discounted it. Anyway, if you take a chance, take a walk, it's back in the back part where the pool is on your left, and you go past where the basketball courts are, you'll see it, there's a big purple bench that someone donated. There were probably twenty-five kids there that day digging dirt and soil and working like you would not expect kids to work, cause I know my kid, and she doesn't know my work either. But that was for a friend. And I think it's, it's just a positive thing. It reminds me, as well as with the battery project, one other thing, investing in Milltown so that we make money in the future and ease our, ease the burden on our taxpayers. And I think that's a theory we may have to look at when it comes to the ordinance about registering vacant properties and how they're maintained, and who we get to give those summonses, and how to work that. Again, you need a body there, we gotta pick a chicken or an egg, or we gotta buy bio. But it's what we gotta do for this town. Because you can't clean that stuff up, and we really don't wanna make people look at it when we can, we can do it, so we'll think about it. I hope, thanks. Appreciate it.
I'd like, I'd like to thank someone that I think that we can't necessarily thank enough. Ms. Orlando, I'd like to thank you for your time here. You, you bailed us out and you hit the door. I'm gonna make this short, but I, I know she'll understand, and Fred's old enough to remember this, he was an old-time comedian, and when he signed off, he sang a song, it was called Thanks For Memories, and I wanna say thanks for memories.
I'd like to welcome Gretchen, your first, hopefully many meetings with us. I'd also like to thank Monica for your, your, your service to our community as a borough clerk. I know you're not going far, and I know you're still with us because you're still our Planning Board Secretary, so you're not going far. And I'd also like to congratulate our three new police officers that this morning.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I would like to thank Randy and Barbara for presenting on behalf of the Historical Preservation Society. I think citizen participation on these kinds of committees is remarkable, and I hope that this council in the future considers other recommendations, like a flag policy that came from one of those citizen action committees, and not turn it into a political issue, and respect the citizen voice on issues. I hope we can do better in the future. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I'd just like to say thanks to Monica, you did an outstanding job. I, I noticed the signs work it right now for probably the first time in Milltown's history. And congratulations to the three new police officers in Milltown, best of luck to you. And that concludes what I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I'd be remiss if I wouldn't, you know, highlight to thank Monica for all the great work she's done over the last couple of years, especially as the transition from you to Gretchen, it's been pretty seamless. You made that easier as opposed to passing through clerks that we've had. Again, welcome to the three young police officers, one of whom is a female, I don't think I've ever seen that in my entire time in Milltown, so that's always good to see that progress is being made in that area. Thank you to Mr. Revolinski for taking some of the credit for that battery project, you had that since May of last year and it just sat there, hitting nowhere. I don't know what to say. Thanks to Mr. Carr for bringing it up this year and saying, this has gotta go, we gotta go, gotta make this happen. And if you need any help moving, you let me know.
I'd like to close council comments. At this time, I entertain emotional journers. Second. More in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No. I think you got it. Any other?